Good morning, everybody. Are we on? Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday morning Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Board Meeting. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilchin. I am the Chair of the County Board. On my left, fellow Commissioners Jennifer Brinkman and Deb Shore. On my right, Commissioners Roma Amundson and Vice Chair Commissioner Bill Avery. Joining us from the County Attorney's Office is Mr. David Durbin. From the County Clerk's Office, the County Clerk, Mr. Dan Nolte, and Ms. Kelly Lundgren. The Chief Administrative Officer for the County, Mr. Kerry Egan, and Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Ms. Ann Ames. Now, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, if you'd please start the agenda.
A copy of the rest of the Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff and material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one or minutes, approve of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, May 16th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the Board of Commissioners meeting held last Tuesday, May 16th. Any discussion or corrections? Please call a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are claims, approve of all claims processed through May 23rd, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the claims processed through May 23rd. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number three, new business, special designated license application from Kramer Bar &amp; Grill for an event to be held on July 8th, 2017, at Kramer Bar &amp; Grill at 11365 West Kramer Street, Kramer, Nebraska.
Okay, is there anyone here representing Kramer Bar &amp; Grill? Does anyone have any questions? I would entertain a motion. Hearing no motion, I, we will hold this application. Please continue on to the next item, Mr. Clerk.
Three B is a resolution in matter of the closure of Structure H-115.
Okay. I know the county engineer was planning to be here for this item as well. I would entertain a motion. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and hold this item as well. Move on to the next item, Mr. Clerk.
Next is three C, and this is an agreement with the League of Human Dignity to provide to residents the independent living curriculum. Term of the agreement is from July 1st, 2017 through January 31st, 2019. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the League of Human Dignity. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is renewal of an agreement with Emeritus Group for the administration of the Lancaster County Self-Inured Dental Plan from January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018. The monthly fee is $4.47 per enrolled employee and will be applicable from the state, for the stated term.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Bill Kastner from Human Resources, here to answer any questions that you might have on D or E. Those are both renewals for the 1-1-2018 term. They have no increase. They're from Emeritus and we recommend approval.
You said no increase.
No increase, right. Correct.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to renew the agreement with Emeritus Group for the administration of our self-insured dental plan. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one abstention. Is renewal of an agreement with Emeritus Group for the administration of the Lancaster County Vision Plan from January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018. The current plan and rates will be the same as those applicable to the period of January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2017.
Any questions for Mr. Hoppner?
I just have one. Bill, you said this is for another year and it's a renewal. Are there other renewals that are possible in the future or does it go out to bid after a certain amount of time?
We've, we've had Emeritus now. We did bid it, I think it's been about three years ago. We work with Aon, as you know, as our benefit consultant. At this point, it's a self-insured plan for the dental and so they've been doing the administration for us. So they do, they've kept the rate the same. It's been very competitive. We can talk to them this year about possibility for, for future years, but it's been really one of those plans that it's, it's self-insured, it's administration, and they've done an excellent job with it. We really haven't had any complaints or problems with it, so.
Sure, my question is more, is the contract structured so that we can renew then? It looks like we've had the same rates for two years. Now this is for a one-year contract.
Right.
Is it possible in the contract to then renew for additional years at a time or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No, it would just be a one-year contract.
Okay, thanks.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to renew the agreement with Emeritus Group for the administration of our vision plan. Any additional discussion? Please call a roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one. Three F is Nebraska Medicaid Participating Provider Agreement between WellCare of Nebraska Inc. and Lancaster County. Term of the agreement is for one year from the effective date.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Nebraska Medicaid Participating Provider Agreement with WellCare of Nebraska. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is a licensing agreement, licensing agreement with Swank Motion Pictures, Inc. for showing DVD movies at the Youth Services Center. The county will pay $449.10 for the license. Term of the agreement is July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Excuse me, a motion and a second to approve the licensing agreement with Swank Motion Pictures for showing movies at the Youth Services Center. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is a memorandum of understanding among the City of Lincoln, the Lincoln Lancaster County Public Building Commission, and Lancaster County to upgrade five-city TV equipment. The cost of county is approximately $2,019.05.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding with the City of Lincoln and the Lincoln Lancaster County Public Building Commission to upgrade five-city TV equipment. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Three I is an agreement with NASRO to provide an advanced training program for up to 15 school resource officers from June 14th through June 16th, 2017. Cost of county is $4,800.
Good morning, Sarah with Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. This is to provide, it's the National Association of School Resource Officers Training, and it would be a partnership, collaboration with Lincoln Police Department to train up to 15 of their SROs. So we are excited with this opportunity. Originally, LPD had written a grant application with us to do an implicit bias training. They already had that in their academy and so we were able then to reach out and to provide a training that's also focused on youth in another capacity.
Thank you, Ms. Hoyle. Any questions? Did you make a motion?
Move approval.
Sorry.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with NASRO to provide advanced training for up to 15 school resource officers. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is a grant contract with the YWCA of Lincoln in the amount of $10,455 for the Girl Circle Program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Services Aid State Grant Number 16-CB-523. Term of the grant contract is April 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2017.
And I have the Director of the YWCA here with me today to talk about the, this program, Karen Bell Dancy.
Good morning. It's my pleasure to come before you to tell you a little bit about the Girl Circle Program. This is a model that empowers girls in a, in a group setting. It is not an advice-giving type of activity, but the power of the circle is what help girls to develop sound decision-making skills. They will be involved in a pre-evaluation as they start next week. This is a partnership with Dawes Middle School. We will collaborate with them, hold the circle within their summer program. The circles will meet two days a week for the next five weeks during the summer session and we will, we will run two circles simultaneously so that all the girls that are involved in the summer program, grades six through eighth, will have the benefit of participating in the Girl Circle. At the end of the summer, they will do a post-evaluation and hopefully we will see the impact of what the circle activities have done on their thinking and impact them in ways that as they move into the next school year, they're moving in with great enthusiasm and positivity.
Commissioner Amundson?
Yeah, and these are conducted at Dawes Middle School?
Yes, Dawes Middle School.
Okay.
Yeah, and it also, some of the activities that they will go through will help them to develop skills so that it will be helping them to move away from absenteeism, truancy, and some of those overbehav, other behaviors that are really deemed as risky.
How many, how many girls will be involved in each one of the circles?
Currently, during the pre-enrollment process for the summer program, we have 24 girls.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, I entertain a motion.
So moved? Approved?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant, grant contract with the YWCA of Lincoln for the Girl Circle Program. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Three K is an amendment to County Contract C-17-254 with the Human Services Federation to facilitate the Youth Thrive Training. The cost for the two additional trainings will increase the contract by $4,150 for the remainder of the contract term with a revised total amount of $9,500.
And this was the training that was conducted earlier this year. We had two trainings. We were able to train 20 professionals at a time. We had a waiting list of 15 for the second training, so we worked with the Federation to get the facilitator back on board again so we could get done two more trainings. Lori Griggs with Juvenile Probation had a number of her staff that wanted to attend that were not able to attend the first scout round, so we wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to be included in this as well.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the County Contract with the Human Services Federation to facilitate Youth Thrive Training. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is a recommendation from the Prefacing Department and the county engineer to award a contract to Gana Trucking and Excavating for 2017 Erosion Control. The total amount is $271,106.45.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So this contract is to do erosion control on Structures D-88 and Structures H-66 and then also a project on Rock Creek Road.
Yeah, are there any questions for Ms. Dingman?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award a contract with Gana Trucking and Excavating for the 2017 Erosion Control Projects. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. M is an agreement with Constructors, Inc. for Asphalt and Resurfacing Projects in 2017. The amount of $5,097,807.23 with an option for additional work in the amount of $1,038,302.6 works is to be completed on or before November 1st, 2017.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So this is this year's asphalt contract, which includes approximately 20 miles of asphalt overlay at various locations around the county in addition to about two miles of new pavement on Adams from Stevens Creek to 148th.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Constructors, Inc. for the Asphalt and Resurfacing Projects for 2017. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. N is an amendment to County Contract C-15-217 with Gary's Lawn and Landscape for the Annual Service of Noxious Weed Control, Spraying, and Mowing. The amendment renews the contract from May 19th, 2017 through May 18th, 2018. The cost of county is not to exceed $15,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the County Contract with Gary's Lawn and Landscape for the Annual Service of Noxious Weed Control, Spraying, and Mowing. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Mr. Clerk, may we revisit item number B, please?
Three B is a resolution in matter of the closure of Structure H-115.
Good morning, Ms. Dingman. This was, yeah, we, we held this to wait for your presence.
Thank you.
Because we know you wanted to brief us on this.
So Structure H-115 is located on 176th Street between Elbow and McKelvey Road at exactly the half-mile point. It is a four-by-five box culvert that is approximately 31 feet long. It was built in the 1930s. We've had a lot of problems with this box. It actually is one of our NEMA grants that we got two years ago. Unfortunately, this grant remains unfunded and we've been trying to kind of patch this box back together and keep it open. It has gotten to the point where after even a minor rainfall event, the banks of this disintegrate and start to fall away and so I felt last week that we could no longer stabilize this and that it needed to be closed.
Did you have any idea how long the closure might last? I mean, are you still waiting for the NEMA funding? Are we going to go ahead and move forward without?
Um, I think that is a decision that we're gonna have to make. The NEMA funding was 75%. NEMA, 25% Lancaster County. Remember this structure and one other structure, Y-181, we received grants on, they remain unfunded. And so I think that's a decision that we're gonna have to make as a county. Do we continue to wait for these grants to be funded or do we go ahead and move forward in the next year to replace both of these structures?
Commissioner Shore?
What is the average daily traffic count on this road and what is the suggested detour route?
So it is a gravel road and so we just go ahead and go around the section mile. I believe the count on this one is under 100 cars a day.
Okay. Thank you.
And we also know with the construction of this box, or reconstruction of this box, you may note from the exhibit that, for whatever reason, and this is Camp Creek, which we've also had additional erosion issues with, that the, the road is clearly not within the right-of-way. So we have some right-of-way negotiations we're gonna need to do here.
The road is not in the right-of-way? Okay.
That is correct.
Commissioner Brinkman?
I just want to revisit what you've just talked about in terms of NEMA grants, so I'm, think I'm playing catch-up here, but you say we have a grant, but it's unfunded. How, how does that work? What does that mean?
Well, in 2015, when we had the flooding, we found out that NEMA has what they call hazardous structure grants and that we could put in for these grants and so we went ahead and we prepared grant applications and did cost-benefit studies and a number of other things. And we were so super excited when, when we got a couple of grants and, and then, and then the grants became unfunded. So we're next in line, but it's not a funded grant.
Thank you.
So we're waiting for the grant to be funded by the state?
Or, or to make the decision that we should move forward without the state funding.
Any other questions for Ms. Dingman?
Will I move approval? Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close Structure H-115. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hold item A until next week and we'll reach out to the applicant and ask them to be present.
Okay, next is number four, consent items. Setting a public hearing on Tuesday, May 30th, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building for County Tax Amendment Number 17008 to amend Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 20, and 22 of the Lancaster County Zoning Resolution. Right-of-way contracts between Lancaster County and the following. SSAR LLC, South 84th Street and Rokeby Road in the amount of $2,070.50. Catholic Bishop of Lincoln, South 84th Street and Rokeby Road in the amount of $1,361.25. Donnie W. Johnson Trustee, North 176th Street and Waverly Road in the amount of $2,00, excuse me, of $230.50. Utility Permit Number 1544, allowing Windstream Nebraska, Inc. to relocate 500 linear feet of buried fiber optic cable on Northwest 112th Street West to the county right-of-way. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval of the consent items. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number five, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on the agenda, may do so at this time.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, sign in and please state your name.
Sorry, I'm a little out. I live at 16850 Adams Street. I'm here today to express some concerns I have with a business operating at 16745 Adams Street. I guess this started in July. A gentleman brought, bought the property. He introduced himself and his son introduced himself as, I believe their name is Lem, Lemby, Marvin Lemby. They told me they were going to operate landscaping business, I believe. It's called creative landscaping. I didn't have a problem with that. They came out, they put a gate over the property, the access to the property, and things were going along fine and I noticed there was quite a bit of traffic increase from that point on. And a few months later, I called Terry Caffey at Building and Safety and he said that he had been informed that they were operating a landscaping business and they were going to do an inspection of the property. And I guess that took place and I waited a while and was told that they found that they couldn't do that. And they were going to write a letter to him saying they couldn't do that. And I waited a few months and called Terry again and he informed me that they had hired an attorney and the attorney had advised them to start a nursery there. And under the rules of the county that they could operate a nursery there and there is nothing that the county could do, which I accepted, that was fine. So in the middle of January, it was believed, it was in the middle of January, they mowed a, a stretch there and planted some small trees and became a nursery, officially operating as a nursery, I believe. And I guess everything was fine. And then about a month ago, I think, they went in and mowed the strip after it grown over and mowed most of the trees down and started to operate again, I guess as a landscaping business because all the trucks and trailers that they pulled up and down the road, pulling in and out of there every day, continued to operate just like they always did. So I guess that bothers me because of all the traffic, the road conditions have deteriorated there. I've lived there for 38 years now and I'm concerned about the roads because they're not real good out there. And it doesn't appear to me the county really cares what goes on out there as far as the road conditions. The ruts are terrible. The traffic has doubled. There are 11 families, I believe, that live on 48, from 48th Street on Adams to where I live at 16850. And yesterday I went over to my, to Joe Schwartz's place and I took pictures of how many vehicles are on that property. There are 14 vehicles parked there, employees that, that work there. So I don't think that's quite right, that they should increase that much traffic on that road and that's just the people that work there. And then have all the traffic from the, they have large trailers that haul landscaping materials. And just because they hired an attorney and now it doesn't plant some trees this big and now they say they're a nursery and the county thinks that's our right.
You have one minute.
Oh, okay. So I guess that's all I'm saying. I think the county should be more responsible in what kind of businesses can be operated. And I'm just a layman. And I'm just a layman. I don't know anything about the laws, but maybe you can't do anything about this. But this is not, you know, this is not just one case. This is popping up all over Lancaster County. And I think maybe you should rewrite the rules. And you should say, what is a nursery? You know, I can plant some trees on my property, and I can say I'm a nursery, and then maybe I can buy a bunch of trucks and stuff, and I can start hauling other materials and stuff. And then I can say, you can't do anything to me because I'm a nursery. That's all I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we, we have had a number of conversations, and we'll, I'll follow up with you. There's some more information that we received from the state and Nebraska Department of Agriculture regarding the, the, this property. Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else?
My name is Sean Fentel, and I'm here with my wife Alexis, Lexi. We're here to talk about some concerns with an expanded home occupation permit that was approved last year. So we won't rehash anything that was discussed last year. I'll do my best to do that. This is some reference information for you to, to go through as I talk through this information. I've narrowed it down to three focus areas and 10 areas of, of concern. But this is a significant concern, and I'm just going to go ahead and jump into it right now. If there would be a way for me to hook up my laptop, I probably would speed it up a little bit, otherwise I could just go through it right here. We'll get signed in, too. Yep, right there. Thank you very much. Yeah. There you go. Okay, so you should have these slides there also. The presentation information starts on page one of eighty-eight. There's quite a bit of reference material in there also, but that points back to some information that would have been discussed at previous meetings, starting April 12th of last year through July 12th, actually. So that's really what I'd like to talk about. What we're asking for is to, to schedule a public hearing to proceed with discussion on revocation due to issues with information presented or withheld at these hearings or to void the resolution altogether due to issues that I will discuss here in a second. So three areas of concern. There were some inaccuracies and some exclusions at those hearings. There, there are some issues with resolution and the applicability, and also a resolution modification that was presented at the July 12th meeting that I'll talk about here in a second. So again, that's what we're asking for. But this is a very, a very good quote from Commissioner Wilton, and the issue is really for us, and why it becomes a challenge, and why we grant exceptions, is not because we want to be lenient. That's not our MO. It's the conversation has always been about your customer. Those individuals who are having a wedding, the invitations have been mailed, and it would be very disruptive. And so that's why, moving forward, you are on record, and you know that you're not in compliance. So that was April 19th, told to the applicants. So on that date, April 19th, Commissioner Wilton asked that the Smiths not schedule any additional events until the venue was, venue was properly zoned. Ms. Smith stated that they are booked every Saturday until the end of July, but would not take any additional requests until properties, properly zoned. And all that reference information is in there. Here's all the correspondence, as, as far as what was discussed, verbatim, and that's also in the videos also. Again, and I would agree, just ask that you not agree to any additional events until you get all this resolved. There were three agreements that no additional events would be resolved. Commissioner Shore asked, so in addition, in addition to item E, which is another wedding, it looks like, like you're having on May 21st, what other events have you agreed to? And the response was, we also have another wedding on May 14th as well. But what was completely left out was that only four days after that meeting on April 19th, they had an event, that they had an event planned. So that's the thing, that there, there were things that were left out that basically changed what the reality was and, and made this look like it was basically minimizing the circumstances that were being dealt with in that situation. And again, Ms. Smith stated they're booked every Saturday until the end of July, but would not take any additional requests until zoned properly. So issue number one, a discrepancy on what was said, not said regarding events scheduled to take place, and a discrepancy on agreement to not schedule any additional events. So this piece of information right here, in the lower right, you'll see comes from the June 28th meeting, where all of a sudden, there were more events scheduled in September and October. So how did that happen? There was an agreement not to schedule any more events, an agreement that was made between the Smiths and yourselves, which led up to getting this permit. Or it was, there were more events already scheduled. And Commissioner Amundson looked into it more, which I really appreciate also, and, and she said on July 7th, at the staff meeting, they're continuing to take reservations. So they were. The Fire Marshal document, there were two different versions. Presented on June 28th, there was a version here that said page three of three. So why is that? Page three of three. So on June, July 7th, the information that, that should have been presented was, was there in, in its entirety. The very important documents that you see right here that show that they shouldn't be in operation, that all corrections shall be made and all items corrected on or before the building can be occupied. And those said page one of three and page two of three. So how did those get left out? A couple more items if I, if I could.
Okay, you got to wrap it up, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Very good.
One minute?
Just, just wrap it up.
So that, that's a ma- a major issue. Number four, the deadline was not met. That was supposed to be the end of July. So that was information that was communicated during the hearing process. They didn't meet that deadline, and they still have not met that deadline. Other issues, there were statements made that all of the events here are indoors, and because this is an indoor venue, that was not correct. Issue number six, misleading information regarding the lighting from the barn. I think you've probably seen that information that I've sent before. If you haven't, I can send it again. But those lights mysteriously reappeared and started disturbing our peace later on. And I understand that that, that's not an issue with the permit until they start having events. But how do lights that they said that were disconnected start to operate again? That's not being a very good neighbor, in my opinion. Inaccurate information on time of conclusion of events. They clearly went past 11 o'clock, but that was stated during, during these hearings. And, and that's a problem. Their contracts show midnight, there are wedding agendas that show midnight, and there were thousands of people that were affected by this. And this document shows an estimate on how many people were affected, not only by the people that were at these events, where they were not supposed to be taking place according to the Fire Marshal and Building and Safety. But that adds up to an estimate of 3,763 people that had events canceled for one reason or another. And I'm just going to jump up.
Yeah, if you would, please wrap it up, Mr. Fentel.
So here was some information that was sent from the Smiths to one of their contract holders. And it said, we found out mid-April, they had been working with us and approved all of our events until May 21st. So unfortunately, they were telling their contract holders that they had approvals when they did not, and that doesn't set a very good example. Again, being a good neighbor is a very important part of this, and the landscape site plan is no longer valid. There were resolution modifications presented at the July 12th meeting, at that meeting, and we never had a chance to see that document.
Mr. Fentel, how much longer are you going to be? Please wrap it up.
Okay, all right. One minute, I'll, I'll wrap it up. So here is what was presented on July 12th. We were actually sent an email the day before with the updated resolution, but all of a sudden, resolution modifications appeared on July 12th by the attorney for the applicants at that meeting. And we didn't have a hard copy of that resolution to review. So I really appreciated the information that was sent to us on the 11th, and that was sent from Jerry Rorabaugh, I believe, but it didn't help us a lot, and she didn't know the difference, because all of a sudden, there was more information that they were asking for on that date. And I even asked at that meeting on July 12th, why can't we review these resolution modifications? And that is very important as a part of the, the public process, that we should be able to review those documents, especially when that is what was voted on. That was a significant resolution modification, and you've got all that information in front of you. But this is a perfect example of why the Nebraska Open Meetings Act does exist. And it specifically states, public bodies shall make available at the meeting for examination and copying by members of the public at least one copy of all reproducible written material to be discussed at an open meeting.
Okay, Mr. Fentel, are you wrapping this up?
Yep, I'll conclude with this by asking that this resolution should be voided due to this issue with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. Two significant items with that. One was that that permit would have only been valid for two years, and at that point in time, they would have had to have reapplied. And the issues that I just brought to your attention, as far as the inaccurate information and the issues with communication to the contract holders would have been reviewed. But that was taken out, and also, they were able to have events on Friday nights also. So it changed significantly in, in scope.
Okay, thank you.
Answer any questions if you, if you have any?
Not during public comment, that this is not something on the agenda. It's just a forum for you to provide information that wasn't on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, please continue the agenda.
Next is number six, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including department budget hearings, on Thursday, May 25th, 2017, at nine AM in the Bell Oxford Studio with the county city building. Please note the time change due to employee recognition breakfast. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, May 30th, 2017, at nine AM in room, in room one twelve of the county city building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on 560 TV, Cable Channel Five. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the internet at lancaster NE.gov under 560 TV Video On Demand or 560 TV on YouTube.
Move adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll. Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. We are adjourned. That concludes our Board of Commissioners meeting. Have a good day.